Planning Board is now in session. Good evening, everyone. First item on the agenda is a discussion item, Master Plan Update. This is Latrell.
The Master Plan Committee last met on December 4th, and we did a recap of our community visioning forum. Also discussed looking at more ways for outreach to get more community input. We're looking to do a survey, which we'll put on the town website and look for various other ways of distribution and perhaps some more forums to come. We will be meeting next on January 15th, 7:30 at the Senior Center. All are welcome. And I think that's it.
Any questions or comments on that? Any compliments? Definitely compliment. Master Plan Committee, this is Latrell on your hard work. Next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing, 25 Marlborough Road. St. Mark's Dormitory, major site plan approval. This is in the public hearing, 25 Marlborough Road. St. Mark's Dormitory, lower impact development, special permit, public hearing. These hearings were continued from September 9th, September 29th, October 21st, and November 18th. I'll ask the Town Planner to give us an update.
Well, a lot has happened since the last meeting, which was November 18th, and let me just follow up here. On November 26th, Whitman and Bingham, the team engineer made a submission, which I call number four, was planned stated November 19th, and additional documents. Those were distributed to Fussin O'Neil for review and to the town departments. We did not receive any further town department comments. The information was also distributed to the Planning Board. We received comments back from Fussin O'Neil on December 11th, which we then forwarded to the applicant team and to the Planning Board. Following that, on December 12th, after the, you know, we got the full submission set, there was a revised plan for the sign based on Fussin O'Neil's comments that the sign would need a variance because it was...
It exceeded, it exceeded 10 square feet.
Correct. So that sign was reduced in size and a copy of that was on the Dropbox, but not an official copy in the package, which I anticipate will be in the final plan sets. Also, I prepared a draft decision for major site plan approval. There'll also be one coming for the LID special permit. But the draft copy you have actually includes all the possible conditions and all the waivers, which will then be transferred to the LID where appropriate. But we just had one large document, so it's all together there. And that was also provided to the applicant team on Friday. So you might've had a chance to have a peek at that. And that brings us to tonight. And Andy, Andrew Mills, one of the Planning Board members, is not here this evening, but he has indicated that he'll invoke the Mullins Rule and will review the information from tonight and any documentation and then provide the town clerk with a notice that he did that, so that he can continue to be a voting member for the Planning Board on your projects. And Jessie Stein, another Planning Board member, isn't here this evening, but he has previously recused himself from St. Mark's due to a potential conflict with an application for one of his children to the school. So that brings us to tonight. We do have a form here, should you request an extension and a continued public hearing to January 6th. And that's all I have.
So usually we discuss the extension at the end of the time. But is that your intention tonight, is to request an extension? Because if you don't, then the project is either approved due to inaction by the Planning Board before the approval period ends, which is Friday. And Mr. Mills wouldn't be back in town until after that. So this is kind of a fork in the road. If you intend to request an extension, it would be to the Friday following our next meeting, which is January 6th. So it would be January 10th would be the recommended extension time. So if that's your intention, then we'll know that we have to do that before, we'll know that we have to have you request it, and then the board would vote on your request.
Would that preclude understanding where we stand with the various items on the, in the letter? So in other words, if we request an extension, does it mean there'll be no discussion of the items that are outlined in the letter?
Tonight?
Yeah.
No, no.
All right.
No. It's just that if you don't request an extension, then that means that you would be compelling the board to make a decision whether or not to vote tonight before the approval period ends, or to make a decision to do nothing and let the project be approved due to no action. But then you wouldn't have any conditions.
So we do want that extension request?
Okay, very good. So we'll, we'll get to that when we're toward the end of our time. So we'll turn it over to you and introduce your team.
Okay.
Did you need the easel?
I don't think so.
Stand this time?
No.
Okay.
It's the same group you've seen before, but I can introduce everyone. Thank you. Thanks for having us back. I'm Rob Cook-Levich. I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer. This is Lisa, architect with Goody Clancy. Andrew is with Landscape Architects, Architecture Firm, A.T. Leonard. Brian is with our Civil Engineering Firm. Lee is our project, with our project management firm. And Samantha Brennan is here and is our Assistant Head of School. So that is our team here tonight. And I know we have a lot of information to share, and that we have shared a lot. We saw the information from Fussin O'Neil, and I'll turn it over to Lisa, who can start digging into the first bullet points.
So there, there really was, Fussin O'Neil's letter mostly made reference to previous, their previous items from previous letters, and then most of those items, the conclusion was, you know, it's at the discretion of the board for various things. The only item which was new had to do with the size of the sign. So, so that, yeah, exactly. So those were shown as 12 square feet, and the new, newly issued S1 drawing dated 1212 has a nine square foot. Both of the lower signs are nine square feet. The top sign was already in compliance. That's replacing an existing sign of the same size. So same messages, same text, same details, just reduced to be three by three feet.
So I guess what we would ask is, could we go through, or could you give us some indication, I know you're not going to vote tonight, but the different waivers that we had requested, if there's any issues? First one was the maximum building height.
Could I just, I want to finish up with the sign, I guess, or have some discussion on that.
Sure.
Is that what you want?
As a sign?
As a size?
As a size. Well, the, we were essentially trying to use the precedent sign that marks the loading dock entrance today, that the message has to change now because there'll be an additional entrance along School Street, so you have to kind of say which one you're talking about, you know, for people to understand. If a truck had come to Marlborough Road entrance, where are you directing them to now that there's more than one place along School Street that they could pull onto campus? So we have to add the message, this is called Entrance One, this is called Entrance Two. But, you know, essentially, this is copying the detailing of the existing sign, so, you know, we're, we're comfortable with that. This, we are, I think, you know, St. Mark's would not engage Goody Clancy eventually for this sign. That would be, they would probably engage directly with whoever they normally utilize to design, construct, install their signage. So it's, I would say it's, it does what it's supposed to do. You know, it has font size similar to what they have there now, material similar to what they have there now, including the seal similar to what they have there now. So I think it's, you know, a pretty good facsimile of what is appropriate for marking those entrances.
So yes?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Right. That's the short answer. Right. Yes. Yeah.
Because if you wanted a bigger sign, then...
I don't think it's necessary. I, you know, I, I tested it, and I think it's perfectly legible at, at a nine square foot sign.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go on then. Oh, were there any other questions on, on the sign?
So the first item had to do with the building heights, and Brian and I had spoken incorrectly at the, a previous meeting, giving the heights as lower than it is, but there's a graphic that was in the package where we did the calculation for various buildings on campus. And at 49 feet, it's, it's only a foot or two higher than the existing building, and it's actually a couple feet lower than the STEM addition, which was approved five years ago. So we're asking that it's in the same ballpark as the other buildings, and therefore, we're asking that we get a waiver under the Dover Amendment.
Just for clarity, this is the same rendering you showed in the beginning, right?
This is the same rendering. We just added the, the heights that you can see up there, the midpoint heights. Yeah, and, and Rob also wrote a letter justifying the background of why the building is as big as it is, as tall as it is, and why we needed to have three stories. And we didn't want to spread it out any further, cover any more area on the site. Which is...
Any questions on that? Comments? Do we have the authority to, to approve that, or does that have to go to the ZBA? I forget.
The Zoning Board of Appeals is the body that grants special permits for building height and for changes in the dimensional requirements, like the floor, floor area ratio. And I believe we received in an email form from the current building commissioner, if it wasn't back already talking to Mark Robideau at the time, the prior...
Yes, right. I forwarded that.
Yeah, there's an email that says that, based on the Dover Amendment, that you would not need a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. So this waiver was included here because of the discussion we had in the past. I wasn't sure. I was going to ask that as well. Does the Planning Board have to grant a waiver for that, or is that understood because it's a zoning Board of Appeals jurisdiction?
It would seem that, based on the opinion that the Dover Amendment applies, then they don't need to get a permit of variance. It would just be, I think, handled as if the vote carries to approve the project, the, the height of the building would be included in that vote, along with square footage, setbacks, and all that other stuff.
And perhaps I could, instead of outlining it as a waiver, in the decision letter, I could put it in the findings. Usually I write a comment about if there were any other permits required from the Zoning Board, so I could modify under findings under item number four, where it talks about invoking the Dover Amendment. The applicant was not required to obtain special permits from the Zoning Board of Appeals under Bylaw sections that are applicable for building height and for maximum floor area ratio. In there, I could explain what's proposed and what is, you know, the restriction, so that it's clear in the future that that was part of this approval. I could shift it from the waiver to the findings, so that it, okay, I'll do that.
Thank you. And our second Dover Amendment-related request, now we had a more Dover-related before, but we've fallen back to just these two, had to do with the floor area ratio, and I sat down with Karina, and we were trying to figure out how to calculate the floor area ratio. And we did it two different ways. One was for the whole campus, in which case it's .068. Then we did it for the two partials that are involved here, and it's .306, which is over, the other one's under. But we think it's an negligible difference. It's obviously under for the whole campus, and it's over in a condition that's already over for those two parcels. So again, under the Dover Amendment, we're requesting that, and I think Fussin O'Neil said that they didn't see that it made much of an impact on the far.
Right. And again, here, when I wrote up the waiver request, I used the worst-case scenario, so that you would be covered. So if it does turn out to be just based on the two parcels that are impacted versus the whole campus, that, you know, .306 is a worst case, you'd be all right with the lesser value if you counted the whole campus.
I think this is a little different case than what the floor area ratio is normally applied to on a parcel or a standalone lot.
Because as you recall, the project goes over two parcels, the larger one and the smaller. So I'll move that waiver as well to the findings, so that it's recorded historically for both your protection and the town.
You know, it would seem that if St. Mark's was consistently exceeding the floor area ratio campus-wide, there'd be concerns from the neighbors, but the number is so small relative to the whole campus. It gives, I think it gives the public and the board some comfort that if you look at the whole campus, it's, it's not a concern. Any questions or comments on that?
Thank you. The next one, number three, had to do with loading dock areas. And our contention is, since it's a dormitory, it does not require a loading dock, and I believe Fussin O'Neil supported that also in there right up.
We good with that one? For tonight? Yep.
The next one, I'll turn over to Brian. It has to do with the parking space.
You can take my spot.
Excuse me. For the record, my name is Brian Melissi with Whitman and Bingham Associates. The next waiver had to do, we were asking for relief from going from the nine and a half foot wide parking spot that's prescribed in the Southborough zoning to a nine-foot wide space to match the existing parking spots that are in the area. We did want to reiterate that the, that the length and the aisle width both meet current Town of Southborough regulations. We're just asking for the width of the parking space to go from nine and a half to nine feet. And I believe in Fussin O'Neil's letter, they did support that, stating that a nine-foot space is a standard space, standard used in many site development projects. However, it's at the discretion of the Planning Board to allow the waiver.
That's correct.
So that is a waiver?
That's a waiver request, and Fussin O'Neil did opine that it was not atypical.
How does the board feel about the nine feet versus nine and a half, Mrs. Latrell?
We've certainly done that before on other projects for the same reason, because there were other parking spaces that they wanted to match. And even, I think, on a site plan when there weren't others, we went with the nine.
Mrs. Houlihan?
Yeah, I support it. I think it's for consistency in the dorm and what you're trying to achieve. I think it makes sense.
So you got three. So if Mr. Mills comes back and has a problem...
Number six, again, is, has to do with loading dock, loading spaces, which same argument as before about it being a dormitory. Not necessary.
Again, Fussin O'Neil also agrees a loading dock is not required for a dormitory building, and a waiver is requested. It's for a different section of the bylaw.
So that we'd have to vote on that waiver?
Yeah.
Okay. I think what we'll do, I think you're getting, there's no motions being made tonight, so you're getting a feel from the, from the members that are here.
Yes.
So when we come back, there'll be individual motions or combined, combining these waivers, and it'll be a formal vote. So we good with that one, too?
Number seven has to do with the number of parking spaces. Brian?
Yep, I think we've, we've given testimony in the last couple of hearings as to the, not the size of the spaces, but the number of spaces that we're creating in and around the new dormitory building. I think we've talked about where the faculty that's going to be residing in the faculty apartments would stay, and that most of the new parking that's created will be to the, I guess it's the east side, the west side of School Street, but the east side of the new building. And I think Fussin O'Neil, to paraphrase, they just wanted to make sure that the Planning Board was comfortable with the number of spots, and that we don't have to do, or we're trying to avoid having to do a campus-wide parking calculation. But we've created new parking spaces in and around the dormitory. St. Mark's, I believe, is, is comfortable with where we've provided them. And we just want to make sure that the board is comfortable with the information that we've given you guys.
And just to clarify, it's my understanding that it's not 46 additional parkings, it's 33.
No, actually, we corrected it again. It's 38.
We're actually creating 46 new spaces. However, in the, in the, while we're getting rid of the connecting driveway from, say, where the new visitor parking spot would be...
At the chapel.
At the chapel, there's five spaces there, you know, parallel spots. And then there's three up by the existing Terriott dorm that will get supplanted. So while we create 46, we lose eight.
So the net gain is...
Thirty-eight.
Net gain of 38, including the visitor parking and the dorm parking?
Correct, correct.
Okay. Because I have to reflect that, exactly. So 38. And what the breakup is, is, it doesn't matter, it's just a net gain? Okay. The visitor had five, and it's going to 12?
So the...
The visitors, at the main entrance?
Yeah, to walk around. So there's 11 new spaces at that parking lot by the chapel.
Yeah.
However, we end up losing five in the portion of the driveway that we're kind of losing. And then as you go over, there's three spots over by Terriott that, that end up getting wiped out because of the new construction. And sprinkled around the south side of the building, there's six spaces. And then the remainder are on the east side of the building and the west side of School Street, so. And if you need for your, for the, for the final decision, I can put that, I can write that down and throw that into you in an email, Karina, if it'll help to know exactly where they are if you need that.
I know, I know where they are. I just wanted to, it to be clear to the planning... I just wanted it to be clear to the planning board
Okay.
that with a net gain of 38, if you take away the 11 spaces that are at the visitor parking near the chapel, the dorm has a net gain in that eastern parking lot that's proposed of 27 spaces. Kind of that wraparound, the new dorm.
Yep.
Right? Just so that it's clear, it's both. I was wondering that, because when I was seeing the 46, I was like, are you counting the visitor spaces? So I was like, all right.
We finally got it right.
Okay. So it's a net gain of 38?
Yep.
And Fussin O'Neill does say that they feel that number is sufficient based on the plans that they reviewed, which I believe that reflects.
Yes.
Questions or comments on that one?
And that is, that's not a waiver request? What they're reading is the Fussin O'Neill review comments, just so that's clear.
So once the dorm is built, and you see how it flows, and you find out, gee, we need another half a dozen spaces, how would you do that? Would you do like what the Town of Southborough did at one of our schools and just build them?
Oh, I mean, not to the left, but I believe, and I'm not going to know the number right offhand, but most municipalities have a trigger for a site plan review, whether it be the creation of four spots, 10 spots, 11 spots. I don't know that for Southborough right off the top of my head. It's five spaces. So maybe this was a trick question, but if we needed, if we needed six spaces, then we would certainly be back in front of this board showing you where those six spaces would go.
Okay.
I mean, you know, again, the good neighbor policy, St. Mark's, they want to be the good neighbor, they're not going to go out and do something that's just going to, you know, fly by, you know, the zoning laws, we're going to go by the code, so. If they needed two spaces somewhere, maybe they would knock on Karina's door and say, we're going to do two, which technically we don't need a filing. However, we would stay within the, stay within the rules.
Yeah, and just to point out that it does say in site plan approval, any non-residential development that results in an increase on onsite parking, but it may be a modification to the site plan, although it's still a public hearing, and there's still application fee, so. Cross that bridge when we get there.
If we found out we needed more spaces, we would come to you. And I'm sure if for some reason the building inspector were to get a complaint that said we needed more spaces, maybe that conversation would start with you guys, but we would be back in here having that discussion.
Okay. That, your response to that will be reflected in the minutes, if not in the decision?
We stand by that.
Yeah, we've seen, at the town meeting, people have sometimes questioned the actions of the private schools. And the more that's on the record as to the things that you do to comply, I think the better, whether it's for the better or the worse, it should be on the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
Number eight has to do with the driveway carrying more than 200 trips per average business day.
So this is another responding to a comment from Fussin O'Neill. One of the original comments was, any driveway that carries more than, proposes more than 200 vehicle trips per day has to meet a certain standards in the Southborough zoning code. What we asked was, rather than going out and doing a complete traffic study on School Streets, we don't think the driveway is going to carry more than 200 vehicle trips per day. However, the design of it would meet all that criteria regardless, as far as site distance, curb cuts, and width. And so we meet the spirit of that regulation regardless of whether it carries 100 or 202. And that's the information that we've testified here in front of you guys and put it in writing in a response to Fussin O'Neill. And maybe, if Karina wants to say, but I do believe Fussin O'Neill, if I can read that, or do you want it, Karina? I don't know.
No, you go right ahead.
Says Fussin O'Neill understands the nature of the project. The applicant's response is sufficient to justify the vehicle trips will not exceed 200 trips per day. In addition, they do explain that the drive meets the regulations regardless of the trips per day. It is at the discretion of the planning board to require a traffic study to show the vehicle trips per day.
So you mentioned the width and the site distance and the trips. The structural integrity of the driveway, is that consistent?
It is. It's consistent with a roadway, not just a driveway. We do have, you know, obviously paving details and whatnot on the plan. I believe the fire department has reviewed that, so it'll be able to withstand all the fire department apparatus. But it is designed as a roadway, however, by definition, it's actually a driveway.
Okay. Any questions, comments on that one?
I'd just like to ask, what turning radius is performed on the driveway entrance to prove that the fire truck apparatus?
They didn't ask for it, we did not do that. I mean, it's a perpendicular drive.
Yeah, typically, in their review comments, the fire department, let me just say here, let me see if they mentioned it in here. All turns, access, and cul-de-sac shall be designed to accommodate the vehicles to the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials Bus 45 Design Standard.
We had a, we had a meeting with the building inspector and the fire chief many months ago, and talked about all that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that you know and that the planning board is assured that it can meet the turning radius of that entrance. That's because it'd be horrible that they can't get around that corner to a dormitory, even though, you know, you're not that far from the street, and you have emergency access from the other side.
We could provide, we'll provide a...
I would venture that it fits, and it's not a difficult fix if you have to broaden that, you know, shallow that curve in order for, you know, something to, but just be good to confirm that.
We can give you a, something for the file. Yep.
Yeah, just a record shot of the AutoCAD turning of that Ashdel 45, you know, Bus 45 turning that entranceway. And then it just goes in. It's not on the plan, it's just for the file, so we have it, just to be sure.
We agree.
Will help you, too, so.
If it's easier to put it on the plan, is that all right?
You could do that, too. Either way, as long as we have a record of that, that at least there's some access where the fire truck can.
Yep.
I think we've tried to encourage to put as much info on the plan, so there's a single source for the information.
Okay, thank you. Number 11 has to do with a cash performance guarantee. St. Mark's tends to remain financially viable for the indefinite future, so we would hope that we would, that would not be a requirement.
We talked about that, Karina, on the solar project? Did you, did you, any of you happen to look at that? If I, my memory is telling me that the same thing came up for the solar project, and the board said, you know, we didn't, we didn't need that.
I know on the, on the STEM project, we did not need it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I can double-check that. I didn't look at the prior permit to verify that.
There'd be two that we would look at. It would be the STEM project, STEM building, and the solar, solar project.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the solar, but STEM, we didn't.
So is that something that Sarah would look at?
Yes, yep. Sarah can check that out. It's right in the three-ring binder in one of the decisions. There would be a requirement for a bond. Well, with the, planning board may not have necessarily conditioned that. It may have just, we'll have to check the decision if it's in it. And if not, we can check the escrow accounts to see if one was set up. Or if there's some, we'll check with the treasurer, too, if there was a performance bond of some sort based on those two projects. Because you would have to have had that released at some point with the project being finished.
Yeah, for what? It's worth, the conservation commission waived that requirement in their decision.
With their approval.
They brought it through.
And you have no record of a bond for the STEM or the solar, right?
I don't know about the solar.
Yeah, I'm more familiar with the solar project if it's the one that was in construction when I first started as town planner here. And I didn't recall a bond for that one. But I'll double-check. I'll confirm.
Questions or comments on that one?
Thank you. Number 19 has to do with really hydrological budget.
So really, the next three waiver requests all have to do with a request from the LID, Low-Rain-Pact Development, and some of the information that was required. A water balance calculation, a recharge calculation.
The hydro-geological assessment?
Correct. That's what it was, yep. And so part of the submission was a letter from the project geotech engineer?
GSI?
GSI, correct. Geotechnical Services. And they provided some information regarding what they found on site for groundwater elevations as it pertains to some of the development. I don't know if anybody on the board's had a chance to read that. I could read it into the record if you want. It's pretty specific. However, just to kind of jump forward and paraphrase, Fussin O'Neill has stated that they believe the information submitted describes the groundwater situation out there, or lack thereof, and that they feel that we've answered it, answered that question sufficiently.
I think I did read that some time ago, because groundwater recharge is always kind of a concern of myself on this board and in my prior engineering life. So do you remember if the, if the post-construction groundwater recharge is greater than the pre-construction groundwater recharge?
From the, from the Massachusetts ground, stormwater standards, we meet standard three, which is we match, and in this case, we're a little bit more than the existing recharge, having to do with the creation of the impervious area, there are calculations that we do, and the BMPs, the best management practices that we provide, allow for the infiltration back into the groundwater. The information that is asked for in the LID really has to do with a water balance calculation, which has to do with precipitation amounts, and it gets, it gets fairly involved beyond just a stormwater calculation. It has to do with a hydrogeo type of study. But to answer your question, Mr. Cheer, we match, and it's, in most cases, go over just a little bit, but we do meet standard three of the Massachusetts standards.
Most of the time, the board leans on the developer to enhance groundwater recharge, if possible. And we've had some good success with that. Now, not that, well, actually, until just recently, we've had the neighbors downtown saying how the, you know, the groundwater down there at Main Street is a problem. And if, unless I'm mistaken, I believe that the groundwater flow comes from the north, which is where you are, and heads down to Main Street and beyond. And that's where they're complaining about high groundwater. So it may be the best thing that you met the standard, but unlike what we would ask others to do, you don't exceed it. Exceeding it may make it a problem downtown, or make the problem worse. So I'm glad we covered that. And so you're asking the board to not require you to do those three items?
Correct.
Any questions or comments from the board on those?
No, I know I had asked a couple of questions on that, too. And although I'm, you know, I don't have the technical prowess to understand it, at least the table examples and extrapolations before versus proposed conditions look like they were less than or equal to what is existing. And I think I was comfortable with Karen's kind of approval of the process and Fussin O'Neill, so I feel like my concerns are met.
I think the main point of GSI's letter is we're building on a rise, so the building really does not impact the groundwater much at all, because we're on a high point on the site, so.
So I have a question on the GSI letter. So as Mr. Morris had mentioned, we had many of the neighbors from downtown on a previous project here saying that there was groundwater problems. In this letter, says that the, that the stormwater drains away from the project site and likely drains into the nearby Sudbury Reservoir. So how's it get there? Like, does it go down Main Street and contribute to the stormwater problems?
The basis of our stormwater design is we tie most of our drains into the existing drainage system that's already on campus at St. Mark's. However, what the drainage analysis shows, what we were asked to do on a little bit more of a further investigation by Fussin O'Neill, is to show that we're not going to exasperate that situation. So what we do, we do a pre-development calculation on stormwater runoff. The difference between what these guys do and what the civil engineering part of it does is we're dealing with stormwater runoff, they're dealing with kind of groundwater elevations and which way it flows. And so part of our best management practices, again, both according to your site plan regulations as well as the LID, is we provide certain BMPs, best management practices. We have water quality inlets that collect the stormwater, provide initial treatment. It's a VoTec style of unit where the water comes in, it kind of gets spun around a little bit to get rid of the initial TSS, or total suspended solids. From then, some of the rainwater, some of the surface water goes into a rain garden that was located. That's, again, it's collected, goes through a filter medium of soil, that, again, will filter out that TSS, provide a little bit more treatment, not for all the groundwater, I mean, not all the surface water, but a portion of it. And most of that now goes into a recharge system. That recharge system acts as both a detention system, as well as what we're talking about now, recharging it. So what I always tell, when I'm in front of boards, when we're in front of clients, is there's two prongs to a stormwater design. One is stormwater quantity, one is stormwater quality. So that detention system, excuse me, has a stone base underneath. We use the void space in that stone to collect that first flush of stormwater and recharge it back into the ground. As the heavier storms hit, that recharge system actually is built to those, you've probably seen them on sites, those yellow concave structures, tomato high-density polyethylene, creates a detention area, creates a storage area underneath that parking lot. So as the stormwater rises, we hold it, we let it go at a controlled rate. That controlled rate goes into the existing pipe system that's on campus. What we were asked to do by Fussin O'Neill was to investigate downstream and what happens to make sure that we weren't going to inundate any of the system, not only on our campus, but inundate the system in School Street. And that was part of that additional analysis we provided. Once it flows off-site, we didn't follow it on how it gets to the Sudbury River. Most of that goes across School Street. There's a large wetland system over by property that owned by St. Mark's, where their treatment plant is, and their wastewater treatment plant, and it flows, as far as I know, in that easterly direction. How it gets into the Sudbury River, I don't know. That's more of a groundwater flow information that Geotechnical Services take a peek at. I know it's a very long-winded way to answer your question, and I hope I answered your question, but...
So not being an engineer, so the, so your, most of your stormwater is dealt with on-site?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Being handed... Being handed the copy of the November eighth submittal for the calculations on the stormwater. So after providing that answer, do you intend to send an additional bill to St. Mark's? Because that was pretty good.
I refuse the answer down on the ground, so I don't want to criminalize myself.
Any other questions or comments on that?
This, you know, when the, anybody upstream from downtown, which is just about everybody, they're going to be looked at to help, you know, solve and manage the issues downtown. So all of this information for this project will be added to any other information that the town gets over time and will hopefully help. There's been so little changes to the downtown over the decades that there's, you know, all of these new stormwater regs and technology is all since any type of development downtown. I think the bank was, the bank was built maybe in the late seventies. The cell pro alarms, that was like the late, early, early seventies. And the post office was the late sixties, the brick, brick building on the corner there. So it's been unchanged over decades. What's next?
Last item on our waivers and conditions letter is really a condition request, just that the, we be allowed to, instead of submitting a complete stormwater pollution prevention plan right now, that we be allowed to submit that prior to the start of construction in the spring. And that'll be for the first phase of the work, but the stormwater pollution prevention plan will be for the whole project, both for that specific summer work and for the main building.
And you explained before why you want to do it that way. Could you go over that again?
If I may, just, so I just want to point out to the board that as part of the initial filings and part of all the filings that we have submitted, there is an operation and maintenance plan of the new BMPs that we are providing or that we have designed. So that, you have that information already on what it is for that long-term, how we're going to go about and operate those and how we're going to maintain those. The SWP that we're talking about here is for the construction period only. And that, this board probably knows, anytime you, any type of, any project that disturbs more than one acre, you know, we need to do an online filing with the EPA, and as part of that filing, we need to have a SWP, SWPPP, that the contractor has to adhere to. The original request was because of the way St. Mark's is phasing the project, basically putting out in three, three pieces, two fairly small pieces, one large piece, which is the large building, and that that not happened for another year or so, we had said, and it was me, it was Whitman and Bingham had said, geez, maybe we could do two SWPs because it might be a different contractor. So we were never asking to eliminate that. We weren't going to do that. We just thought it was a better way to phase that in. This board, as well as, as well as the Concomps, it wasn't just you, said, no, we don't really feel comfortable with that. We would rather have, you know, a comprehensive SWP built for all the phases. And so we're going to put that together. Typically, what we do is we try to get input from the contractor. We know who it is. Once it goes out to bid, we have interface with him. They may have some ideas, what they like to do, what they don't like to do, what has worked, what hasn't worked. And we try to give you guys a document that we can actually work by, rather than just a template to say, okay, here you go, and then we're kind of rolling with the punches. So that was the reason why we asked for it to be a condition and not to give it to you upfront.
And in line with what Brian said, we intend to have the award of the gallery edition and the landscaping by late January or early February. So we'll have a contractor on board and have them provide input through the SWP.
So that filing needs to be done a minimum of fourteen days prior to the breaking of ground. And so it's really just to provide, not only St. Mark's and the team, but the town, a better document, a more real document.
And more have more than fourteen days in advance.
Exactly. No, without a doubt. But that's the minimum. It has to be...
Right. And the point is that not always do the contractors provide those. Often, engineering firms provide the SWP that the contractor will follow. And in my history, and if I'm not mistaken, the EPA requires that you don't phase these SWPs. If it's a complete project, they try to avoid, they don't want that kind of phasing. So that's why I brought that up. And I think that's the proper way to do it, whether the contractor or you do it.
Yeah. But what happened with the phasing of the segmentation was contractors would say, well, I'm not disturbing an acre. I'm going to disturb a half an acre, but I'm going to do it thirteen times. So when you looked at it, he was actually disturbing ten acres and needed a SWP, but they would try to avoid it by keeping their site to a half an acre. So that's kind of where it was born from. So, correct. And we, again, we always knew we needed one. We just, we're trying, we always like to start out as a collaboration with the contractor and let him kind of trip on his own, and then we'll come and hit him with it. But if he has a little bit of input into that SWP, he can't say, well, you've provided me with a document that I can't follow.
And you did submit an O and M plan, and it's signed, but it needs to be stamped.
Yep. I believe I did, but the final one, I will, I will have that stamped, correct. Yep. So again, we're not trying to skirt any of those rules. It's just a, it's a process type of thing.
Questions or comments on that?
And in addition, I know that's the last Fussin O'Neill comment, but I usually, the board likes to address any waivers of LID techniques that weren't incorporated into the plans, for example, roof gardens. And that's why in the waiver section, you'll see one that's highlighted, that's reflecting the two techniques I believe you're not incorporating.
Because of the sloped roof, that doesn't work.
First one was like the green roof. This case, with the, with the architecture and the sloped roof, there's no place to put a green roof on. And I believe the other one was the permeable paving. And we tried to design such that we would meet all the rules, meet the spirit of Southborough's LID bylaw, but not do a whole lot of impermeable paving. While I think it looks good, and I'm probably going to shoot myself in the foot here, but speaking strictly for myself as an engineer, while it looks good on paper, it's very maintenance intensive. It needs to be vacuum swept four times a year. In my experience, we put it on a, on a plan, it gets built, and nobody ever follows the rules and regulations or else they're usually fighting with, a nightmare with it. So for that reason...
Because of the soils.
Right, right. And the other part about it was we underlaid by sea soils, most of it up on the hill there. And another reason not to provide an impermeable pavement type of thing, you're going to have water sitting in some of that substratum, freeze thaw. It's just, it's an accident waiting to happen. So we didn't ignore it, but we tried to design around it.
So that's why that's incorporated as a waiver beyond the comments, waiver request.
We, we did have, we, we did review, you know, your preliminary that you sent to us. And Andrew does have some comments on the...
Conditions?
Conditions.
Yeah, I was just waiting till we were talking, please. Questions or comments on that? The impervious, or the pervious pavement and the rain garden, roof garden?
Roof garden, right.
Okay. So what's next? The plants?
The plants.
Good evening. Andrew Leonard here. So we did make changes to the plant list, really not the plant design. The general plant design is the same. The planting beds and the lawns and the meadows are all in the same places. But we went through and did, we used gobotany and did a systematic adjustment to all strait natives. So we got rid of all cultivars except the orchard trees. So we have all straits. There are a few, in fact, I'd say ninety-five, ninety to ninety-five percent of our plants are actually Southborough native, not even just regionally native, which we decided to, after our last conversation with the board, to really try and work that out. So we met with the school's maintenance staff and made some design adjustments so we could get there.
Can you repeat that percentage?
We're about ninety, I mean, I'm excluding the orchard trees because those are the anomaly. We're ninety to ninety-five percent Southborough native. Depends on trees, shrubs.
Mrs. Littrell.
Well, I should also add, we don't think it's going to be a negative to the project. We just had to do a lot of reworking and internal conversations to get to that point. So I just wanted to say we don't think it's a negative.
Thank you very much. It's very, very exciting. I have one question on the landscape plan. There's a thirty-eight inch maple tree that doesn't look like it's, looks like it's outside the limit of work that's going to be taken down. Do you know?
Where are you?
L two O two?
Oh, that's in the limit of work. That's where we're putting in the succession trees. So there's a limit of work around that. The work in that area, actually, we're working with an arborist on to be very sensitive to the tree roots, but the proposed trees, that tree is in significant decline, has a huge crack down the middle of it, and is actually a safety hazard. Luckily, we don't have a walkway near it. But that's where we have a grove of new, what we call great trees, trees that'll get as sizable as the ones that are out there, again, all native. And our goal out there is actually to plant the succession for the grove that you see out there now. Because if we don't start now, we'll end up with a point where we have all little trees and no big trees. So that's what that goal is. And that tree is in significant decline.
Okay.
It is, it is a separate little limit of work area, though. So that, that, it is not in the other work zones, if you, if you know what I mean. So I can see why you thought that that was...
Yes, well, I thought it was the other way. I was backwards.
Yeah, sorry.
Which isn't unusual, but. And just a couple other things. At the last meeting, I requested a planting note that we have done on all our previous landscape plans that all plant materials shall be the species specified. Any changes shall be approved by the landscape architect and town planner, and I didn't see that added to the plan.
We do have a note, but I don't have the, I probably didn't add the town planner. So we can, we can make that adjustment for the final plan because we do have a notes section.
Okay. And I see...
I noticed it in here.
I noticed you removed the staking. Did you want a condition that it can be staked in, in event of a weather event or something?
Maybe we'd know, we, the same as the replacements, is they notify the landscape architect and the town planner, and, and we can make a call based upon that. And the goal would be, we don't need it at all. So it would be really a strange event that would, that would cause that. So I defer to the board on what level of detail they'd want on that. I mean, we'd usually do that as an emergency protocol, just because a big event happened. But if you want that specifically noted, we can either note it as a condition or note it as on the plans, however you guys want that stated. Because we're on the same page as far as when it would happen. So it's just a matter of how does the board want it to be seen now and moving forward.
And what are you talking about when you say staking?
Guy, tree guying. So you know, the stakes and the guying that goes on trees sometimes will, often it's done for no reason at all. And usually, you only do it when there's a wind event or a big snowstorm or something.
Oh, protecting the new plant.
To protect it, yes.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
So it's a very special condition that this project may never see, or it might see it four times over the length of the project. Like, it's an impossible to predict. So it's, it's really how it is the board want it noted. Is it want it noted as a condition, or I can add a note to the plan that's, that's easy enough to add?
My preference would be just to add a note to the plan. So then everything's all in one spot.
And the note would reference that staking is required?
No.
Or it's not?
It's not required. That staking would be only done with approval of the landscape architect and the town planner.
Protection during weather events.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because we seem to be having these
Yes.
very rare wind events very frequently.
Okay. Just needed to understand.
And that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Yeah, the town planted some dogwood trees at one of the schools. And I guess it was like last year, one of them was, after a storm, was at like forty-five degrees. They didn't stake it. Nobody would have thought that it would need it.
Yeah, they shouldn't, even in heavy wind events, they shouldn't turn that much. It probably means they didn't plant it quite right, to be honest. So that's one of those that, that's why a lot of people guy is because they take, they shortcut how they plant it because they don't compact the soil enough around the tree. So that's one of those that obviously it would need to be reset and guided. But that's why a lot of people guy trees, and that's actually why people, people like me and Littrell don't want a guide because it's very easy to tell when it's done wrong.
Yeah, somebody went back and...
Fixed it. Did they dig it out and reset it?
I don't think so. I think they just grabbed it and pulled it back.
Pulled it over with a truck?
It goes to what you said about the soil. If it was loose enough for it to, the wind to blow it, it was loose enough to pull it back.
For them to just yank right back, yeah.
I think it's still vertical now.
I had two items, just looking quickly at the conditions, that one was just a contradiction of language. I just wanted to clarify because there's a statement I don't think we can meet and still follow the plans. So in the conditions, I'm looking at five for the potential conditions. And it talks about the use of native plants. Well, the, the intro of this says that the landscaping shall be in conformance with the landscape plans as submitted in the application, which include areas of lawn. And then in one of the bullet notes, the last sentence, the, all the way up to the end of the last sentence is all great. But it says, "The restoration of any existing grass area disturbed during construction of the project shall require replanting and seeding with native plants." So to match the grass types that are on campus on, on, around the buildings, we would need to use regular grass seeds. Not, regular grass seeds do include some natives, but they are not all natives. Basically, every lawn you see is not a native species lawn. So our thought was to leave that sentence in, but maybe the suggestion is excluding the areas shown as lawn on the plans. So if someone disturbs an additional area, that it's covered by this note, but the, the actual lawns shown on the plans that are under review would be lawn, conventional lawn. And we will include the seed that has some native in it. The other note, oh, sorry.
I just wanted to clarify. So that's the second bullet item under landscaping condition number five. And you're okay with the terminology until the last sentence, which reads, "The restoration of any existing grass disturbed during construction of the project shall require replanting or seeding with native plants." And you wish to add, excluding the areas shown as lawns on the plans under review.
Correct.
Questions or comments? All set?
Second one I had was about mulching. And I understand where you're going with this. I'm a little concerned about the interim state with St. Mark's being an institution, and a lot of these planting beds are in the high-profile areas. So I'm not thinking holistically about all the beds on this site, but mostly the ones that are in the high-visibility areas, that we're going to have a period of time where our ground covers, which we have a lot of ground covers, we put in as native ground covers, that actually meet the goal of this statement. I'm talking about bullet eight, sorry, the no mulch to be used. So what I'm worried about is the interim period when plants are put in, that if... So what I'm worried about is the interim period when plants are put in, that if there is no mulch, it will, in those areas, we're likely going to need lots of chemical treatment to minimize weeds. Because just the sheer fact the maintenance staff wouldn't be able to keep up with this many beds. So I guess my, my thought slash question discussion with the board was, is there a way to phrase this that mulch could be used in the interim in those beds? Again, I'm not thinking the beds north and south, the one, the woodland-type beds north and south of the new building. I'm thinking specifically of the high-profile beds that are kind of around the, the, all the views to Marlborough Road. And that the school will be able to use mulch for a few years until the ground covers can establish and fight the weeds on their own. I'm, I'm just worried about over, the, the, the need for over-application of chemicals for the sake of not mulching those beds. Again, the woodland beds aside, I think those are eas, easier to follow this protocol. But in these beds in particular, I think there'd be an immediate problem, just in the dynamic of the institution and the people around those spaces. So I was just sort of bringing it up as a discussion point for, is there interim period where, like, mulch is phased out over a period of years? Is it that certain beds in particular and, that could receive mulch and mulch without dyes? Sort of, just trying to meet halfway, because I actually really, I understand where you're going with the note.
I'll have to defer to the board members or Open Space Preservation Commission Chair, who is usually heavily involved in these items in order to find terminology that's acceptable.
As far as I'm concerned, your, what you're proposing is perfectly fine. We'll see what the rest of the board says.
It sounds reasonable to me. I think mulch is better than chemicals. But I'd like to hear what the Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission, her opinion on that, if that's okay.
Mrs. Houlihan.
Yeah, I think it sounds reasonable to me, the approach, but I would also defer to listening to Ms. Gillespie.
Freddie.
Hi, Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. And I'd like to say, do you want me to just talk about this one specific or? The Open Space Preservation Commission reviewed the plans and were very pleased how it has come about to be all straight species, native to New England, and now we're hearing native to Southboro. As far as this mulch, you're, you're right in what you're trying to do was not the intent of that provision, which was the standard, mulch becomes the landscaping. You know, it becomes the plant. It becomes what you're doing in that area. And also, heavy mulched around plants can also be a method that is used so it's easy to just come up and spray with Roundup, anything that grows, instead of weeding. For establishment, you know, thi, this is new to us too, so we're trying to work it out as we go. Having mulch during the establishment period is acceptable. It's that how do we define it, the establishment period, so that it doesn't become the mulch afterwards? Especially where you're having ground cover, obviously, your goal is not to have mulch killing it. But what happens, you know, in three years, when it's like, well, let's just throw mulch down over there? So, you know, I'd be happy to look at whatever language you suggest and, you know, relook at that if there's something, a better way of putting it, if you had an idea.
I mean, the, the general goal is that the mulch and the ground covers, we're proposing flip roles, because it actually helps the school not to have to mulch five times a year, or two times a year, or whatever they're doing. Saves money, saves energy. So the goal is that they actually flip over time. So I think we're the sort of doing the antithesis of what you have this note here for. We're sort of, we just don't wanna, we don't want to cause a problem trying to get to the right solution.
So the, the goal was not to not have mulch for establishment, it was for long-term. So, and that isn't identified in that decision, in that comment. So that needs to be changed with, not having, putting in no dye, I think is beneficial. Was not aware that even the pretty, you know, healthy-looking brown mulch is heavily dyed as much as the red ugly mulch, so... And if, if I can comment on the landscape a little bit more, don't, Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. So the Open Space Commission met Friday morning. We didn't have time to write a letter, but wanted to particularly thank the team from St. Mark's. This was a wonderful collaborative experience. The plan that you have today, from where they started, has continued to evolve to being just fantastic. I think the comment you heard from the landscape architect, that there's no negative impact to this. We're also hearing that it's going to be, in the long-term, beneficial. And this relates not only to the school's landscaping, but to the school's culture and what they're trying to achieve in this town and, you know, with their students. I was fortunate to be able to meet, and they provided staff time to meet with me. I met with their Director of Facilities and the Director of Landscaping. Then later, we had, November sixth, we've had a meeting with, I'll murder his last name, Robert Kukowicz. Sorry. And the CFO, Sandra Duran, the Director of Facilities, and the landscape architect, Andrew Leonard. We went through in detail the plan. That was a, you know, a generous time offer of their staff, but as well as, you know, the Open Space Commission participating. Subsequent to that, their Director of Facilities and their Director of Landscaping attended a presentation we had with Professor Robert G. Geer. We're bringing his scientific research to the school. I'm going to be meeting with the Chair of the Science Department and the Head of the Sustainability Coordinator, a biology teacher. We're looking at bringing options for curriculum and, you know, using the whole campus maybe as a, as a outdoor classroom. This benefits not just the school, but the town. We're hoping, we're bringing these sorts of things to, you know, hopefully to the public schools, but to other properties in town. But St. Mark's is the first one that's, you know, we think this is regionally going to be really important, and it's part of a bigger plan we have, from Breakneck Hill to the Golf Course, to St. Mark's School, over to Chestnut Hill Farm and the Beals Preserve, and on and on. And this planning board is actually been highlighted as taking significant strides in this area. And other towns have contacted me to become part of a regional group working on this. And you are held in high regards for your leadership in working on these types of plants. This is not unique. It's going to be the way of the future, and you're way ahead of the curve here. So thank you.
Do you have any more information on the compliments that the planning board got?
I, I... I have people from New Hampshire asking about you. I mean, you, you, it's not, I, I really, really, you are held in high esteem. And you should, it, you should be complimented. But I did have one more comment on the decision, if I may. And it's not, it hadn't come up before, but it's becoming more common. And I did speak with Andrew beforehand, and I think if we can find a way to put it in the decision, they're not gonna object. But the issue is neonicotinoids. It's a chemical that many nurseries use, and it was common. And what happens, it's the chemical that was sprayed that caused the whole honeybee colony collapse, and that was the canary in the coal mine that alerted us to the issue. Most of the European countries have banned it. We have legislation in our State House now for limiting the use, but not actually banning it. And what happens with it is, it's not like, most of the legislation in this country is, don't spray it when the bees are flying, or don't, you know, when the plants are in flower. But the problem is, it's a systemic chemical. The plant takes it. They even coat seeds with it. And it goes into the plant, into the soil. If you bring the plant home and plant it, other plants that weren't treated in the soil next to it, get it. It has a long shelf life. It's like radioactivity, you know? It has a half-life, and it lasts years. And what happens is, a bumblebee or butterfly that lands on the flower doesn't die immediately, so you don't see that reaction. But other scientists, including Robert G. Geer, have done studies that show, over time, it is killing them. They lose their ability to digest the food. They lose their ability. One thing bees really need is to remember where the flowers were, so they don't have to spend as much energy going back all the time. They have no memory. So we'd like to request that no neo, that all the plants be used, that, sorry, all the plants used be certified, or some sort of statement that they are neonicotinoid-free. How do you do this? It's, we're very fortunate, because again, I have no financial interest in these companies, but both Bigelow's Nursery, which supplies a lot of, all the plants on your plan, I believe, as well as New England Wetland Plants, which supplies a lot of the, the seed mix and some of the other plants, both are neonic free, except for in rare situations, Bigelow's will use it on trees. But if you ask them, they will let you know. And we can put a statement in that that tree can be replaced with another tree if you can't find another nursery that has it neonic free. It's, it's important. It's not worth doing this if you're planting neonicotinoid-treated plants.
Thank you.
So I would write a suggestion or for the decision? Send it to St. Mark's and see if they're, have suggestions on how we could phrase it that would work for them as well? This is collaboration. We don't want to put a demand they can't meet.
Freddie, are you saying you're coming up with a language? And you'd provide it to me to provide to St. Mark's for review?
I'm saying whatever you want me to do.
Well, it's not my area of specialty. So if you came up with language, it may be more effective, and, and then Andrew would understand it, and I could be the medium that, which goes through, the messenger. But it's probably best served between the two people who know about it most that would come up with a term that we could include as a bullet item.
I was, I don't know your process, and I don't want to overstep. I was suggesting that maybe I could send a suggested language to Andrew, and then we just send it to you, as sort of like...
That sounds good to me, if you come up with something you agree to that we put in here.
If that works with...
Sure. It's fine.
I think it takes a few back and forths out of the picture.
Yeah, it's happy, I'm happy to be cut out of that one.
So, but thank you. And again, thank you to St. Mark's. And also, I wanted to mention to the planning board, you will hear consistently applicants that come in with plans, and, not this time, but, you know, can't be done. And then at the end, we have a great plan, and it's showing again and again. It's, it's new. It's not comfortable for a lot of people. But, you know, what St. Mark's has accomplished here is not unique to what another team can do the next time. So, thank you.
Mrs. Littrell.
So back to the, the no mulch thing. I have a suggestion, if you, if this will work. Put at the end, "Except dye-free mulch may be used during the establishment of native grasses and ground cover."
Maybe i, if we can do something that talks about over a period of years? Because i, it will likely take a little bit longer than your review period that you have laid out for, like, plants dying. It, it's, it's probably a two-to-three-year process versus a one-to-eighteen-month process. So if we can, so I, that sounds great. If we can just add a little duration, that gives the plant some time. Because usually, it's the second and third year that plants pop. The first month, eh, first year to eighteen months, they're getting established. So you wouldn't see, we, we wouldn't see the time that the, the no mulch would be needed until a little later in the timeframe. So i, if that's reasonable to you, then if we can just add...
Which is usually three to four years or something?
It's usually three to five years, typically, depending on the plant and how aggressive they are.
Okay.
Meaning how, how fast they grow, basically. None of these plants are, like, non-native aggressive. Does that mean, is that okay?
Yeah.
Could you read that one more time, maybe?
So at the end of that bullet? Comma, "Except dye-free mulch may be used during the establishment of native grasses and ground cover." For a period of three to five years.
And ground cover. What, period of three to five years? Okay.
I'm not a hundred percent sure where you're planning to use the mulch, but couldn't it also be around some of the smaller shrubs? So do you want to limit it to grasses and ground covers?
Yeah, it, it would be. That, that's a good point.
I would just say native plant establishment. I don't think there's a situation where even a tree, you might want it till the ground cover comes in. I don't know, but...
It, it would only help during the establishment period.
Right. So I wouldn't want to limit them to just grasses and ground covers.
So native plant, native plants instead of grasses and ground cover?
What else?
I believe that is it.
So I'm gonna ask the town planner to go over what she thinks and what you will think will happen between tonight and January sixth. Karina.
Okay, just a quick recap. We want to see the turning radius on the plan for the entrance off of School Street. I'll check on the STEM and the SOLO project for if there was a bond related to those projects regarding the waiver request. You're going to add notes on the landscape plan L two O two for any changes to the materials specified. Will require approval of the town planner as well, not just the landscape architect. And then the note regarding staking and guys, not required unless there are certain events that may occur that it would be necessary. You're going to work with Open Space Preservation Commission on language for the neonicotinoid chemical reference into condition number five. And then we'll add the extended language onto condition number five regarding the mulch into the decision for the establishment of plants, non-dye mulch, for, for three to five years. And then if you make those changes, I'll update the decision based on various things that have happened. And this language will need, you know, final set of plans, also incorporating the revised sign plan, all with a consistent revision date, which the planning board will be able to endorse as final plans. We can work out the date that that should be, depending on your frame of work completion. Probably not after, you know, maybe January sixth or something. If everybody agrees, that would be the re, new revision date, because hopefully, that'll be the meeting where the planning board takes action and nothing new comes up, you know? Because Mr. Mills isn't here, and he'll still have an opportunity to express any concerns he has. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to me, and I'll try and answer them as best as I can and guide you based on the information from tonight. And then you'll work with Freddie.
So Karina, it appears we should get our final, hopefully, final submission into you by either the twenty-seventh or the thirtieth of December, in order to have it in time for the sixth?
Yes, because I don't believe, we'll need Fosse and O'Neil to do another review, because this letter was very similar to the last one, other than the sign concern. So, and I think that's addressed and...
So if we aim for the twenty-seventh, or the thirtieth, that's Friday, the thirtieth is the Monday.
Right. And just so you know, I'm out of the office until, from Wednesday this week till the thirtieth. But my assistant... But my assistant Sarah Heckel will be there and she understands. She's quite knowledgeable. She'll be able to take care of anything you need during that time.
Okay.
I have a question about the way that the lines are revised.
Need a microphone.
I just want to check, as we revise the drawings, are we to include the original issuance date in the bottom right-hand corner and then add a revision line? Is that how?
Correct. A revision. Revision date in the revision box.
In the revision boxes.
Yeah, don't change the date of the plan. It's just a revision.
Standard engineering practice. So, uh-
Can I just add one more thing? Typically, these decisions, once they're drafted and we're pretty much in agreement, they'll go to town council for review. Okay? Which is at least a seven-day turnaround. But they'll get, they're drafted, so that'll happen very quickly. And once we get them back, we make any small changes, usually they're typo or certain type of language like grant versus, you know, lets, words like that. And then it'll get filed with the town clerk and then you'll have a 20-day appeal period from that point.
So if there's nothing else, this would be the point in the meeting where, is it your request to extend the approval period to January 10th, close of business?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Luttrell.
I move that we extend the approval period for St. Mark's School, 25 Marlborough Road, major site plan and special permit for low-impact development till January 10th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? See, none, all in favor? Okay, we've extended the approval period. That allows us to continue the hearing. Mrs. Luttrell.
I move that we continue the hearing for St. Mark's, 25 Marlborough Road, major site plan approval to January 6th, 2020 at 7:05 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue the public hearing for the site plan to 7:05 PM on January 6th. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, we've continued the site plan public hearing. Mrs. Luttrell.
I move that we continue the special permit for low-impact development for St. Mark's School, 25 Marlborough Road to January 6th, 2020 at 7:10 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue that hearing. Any discussion?
Just quickly, before I forget, there was a mention about handicap signs at the handicap parking spaces. If you didn't get that from Fussin' O'Neill? You put them on there. Okay. Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor? We'll see you on January 6th. Thank you.
Thank you. Happy New Year.
Rob, you will have to sign this.
See you next year.
My son is freaking out that he hasn't done a Santa list and Santa's coming tomorrow night. Despite two weeks, we tried to get him to sit down and do it. Yeah, Santa comes to St. Mark's and we're back in San Francisco. Awesome. He comes and- So we all bring our kids, we go like pizza dinner and then he reads his book and sings a song. Right, exactly. Right, that's a good one. I'll see you soon. Yes. They are. They're a little- Yeah, yeah. So we'll get through this week. Yeah, yeah. There's a lot going on in the head of seven-year-olds.
Yeah, they share it.
Yes.
But hey, it's about the teenagers, trust me.
I'm sure you know. I'll take my kind of seven-year-olds. Yeah.
Okay, the planning board is still in session? Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. 141 Southville Road, Cane's Crossing, 55 and older condominium documents. Karina.
Okay, is anybody here for Bartolini Builders? No, right, okay. Jack Bartolini expressed that he was going to be here this evening. But I can give you a quick update. Cane's Crossing is the 55 and over development on the corner Southville and Parkerville, yeah, I'm sorry. Which has been in construction and it looks like it's moving along well and it's coming out very nice. We've gotten a lot of good feedback on that and so has Mr. Bartolini. So on November 8th, 2019, in accordance with requirements of the conditions of major site plan approval, we received a copy of condominium documents for the project, including a master deed, a declaration of trust, and rules and regulations for the condominium from Mr. Bartolini's attorney, Tasian, Attorney Tasian, James Tasian, out of Worcester. We forwarded the documents to town council for review. Town council provided a review letter with a few changes, which have all been addressed. The revised documents were resubmitted by Attorney Tasian to Town Council Cipriano, who then provided me with a response email on Friday, December 13th, indicating that we have reviewed the further requested changes to the condo docs as inserted by Attorney Tasian and they are accurate based upon our request. Attorney Tasian has been more than helpful in coordinating these changes consistent with the planning board decisions. So we have the final documents. They've been reviewed by town council and the request was in the condition that it stated that they have to be provided to the planning board for town council review and acceptance. Oh, here he is now.
Mrs. Luttrell.
So town council had made a reference to the O and M manual. Wasn't mentioned. Has that been added?
That has been clarified. Conservation provided me with the receipt of an executed operation and maintenance plan, which is kept on file, which has also been provided to town council in response to that.
Okay, great.
Jack, did you have anything? Karina just covered the whole thing. Okay. So that's information. Is there any action by the board at this time?
Let me just read the condition and only because I don't think I've had to have condo docs accepted here yet. But it says here, just give me one second. The applicant shall execute a cause to be executed articles in the kind of prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the entire domain shall be organized as a condominium in accordance with the applicable law. The condominium documents shall be recorded with the Worcester County Registered Deeds and evidence of such recording provided to the planning board, which, once they're accepted, you'll have them recorded and provide evidence. Here it is. Condition number five of the major site plan approval that was dated June 5th, 2017, indicates prior to issuance of certificates of occupancy, the applicant shall submit the condominium documents to the planning board for review and approval by town council for applicable laws and to ensure consistency with the conditions of this decision. So I don't believe there's action required unless you recall precedents where you did actually vote. I think they just had to be provided and town council reviews them and it's here to present to the planning board that that happened.
So unless there's an objection, we'll just, okay. You need the mic check.
Does it have to be a letter from the board put in the file that this has been satisfied? Is that how, I don't know how this works, Dawn, so I'm just-
Well, I believe, I don't have experience with other condo docs having been approved that I can recall. But I believe that feedback from the attorney, which is an email that's printed, will go in the record file indicating that he has reviewed and the documents are in accordance with what's required.
Okay, so that satisfies the, all right.
Yeah, I don't, do you recall ever having to have condo docs voted on? Does the planning board call?
I don't think there was a vote, but I didn't know if there was a letter saying they've been satisfied. But if it's Aldo's email, that's fine.
That's what, it's Aldo's email. Yeah.
Yes, and your attorney, James-
Tasian.
Tasian was copied on that email as well. So he has record of that, too.
Okay, so then we're all set.
You just have to have them recorded and get us proof.
It's fine. Good enough.
Project going well, Jack?
It is.
Karina, before you got in the room, she was saying how she has heard more than one compliments on the project.
It, yeah, it's coming out. We've had several people, several abutters have stopped and told me they're very satisfied, which makes me feel good.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Okay, thanks, Jack. Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Lighting bylaw working group update. Mrs. Julian.
So I will just maintain the microphone while Sarah is just speaking with one of the former attendees. Sarah has moved to use the recommendations that we provided and to create a bylaw with the subsequent policy. And so that has been advanced. Sarah's been working on that. And we have a meeting with Destin, myself and Sarah on Thursday to finalize some of that. And then I think coming out of that, I will hand it over to Sarah.
Thanks. Yeah, so what I did is I took the initial draft of the bylaw and I kind of parsed out what's going to be going into the policy document and then what will be going into the actual bylaw. A lot of the technical kind of aspects of it are going to be in the policy. And then the document that consists of the bylaw will be much more straightforward. So people-
Is that just as, remember, regulation?
Regulation, sorry. Regulation as opposed to policy. Regulation because the regulation is enforceable. So much like the lower-impact development regulation document, it'll kind of mimic that. And I kind of changed around just some of the content for placement to make it mimic the other bylaws in town. So we're going to meet on Thursday and hopefully that'll be all wrapped up for the 6th.
And then also, there was a contract?
Yes. There's a new contract for Destin to do a few more hours, mostly in training, since I'm here now to help and assist with the writing portion. A lot of that, you know, he, I can take off his plate so he can help us in terms of training the board, informing the public, attending the annual town meeting and attending also the public hearing forums for those bylaws.
The start date for that contract is?
Is today.
Today. And the end date?
Is, right now, it lays out that the considerable amount of the work will be done by the annual town meeting, knowing that, you know, there will be a few hours left for training after that once it's, once the warrant passes.
Think the contract end date was June 30th?
June 30th.
Is that what it says up there?
We have June 1st.
Oh, June 1st.
We gave a little buffer because we do have to process a final invoice prior to the end of the fiscal year.
Right.
Right, okay.
So like Sarah said, the majority will be done by March 31st. We have a few extra days beyond the town meeting in case the town meeting prolongs and it becomes one of the later articles of the warrant.
Right.
Or it is later.
Mrs. Luttrell.
I have a question based on the discussion the last time that we had in setting up the lighting zones.
Yes.
It was mentioned that the business village and commercial would be in the same in the highest light zone. And I was a little concerned about that because some of the business village districts are within residential areas.
Yeah, I think that in looking at it again, I think that business village could go to the L-2 zone and that really the only L-3 zones would be right along Route 9. So the, so Cordova, you know, in downtown will be at that L-2 rating.
That, that makes more sense to me.
Yeah.
Marnie.
Freddie Gillespie, Chair of the Open Space Preservation Commission. Believe it or not, this is of interest to the Open Space Commission because of the impact to wildlife and insects and pollinators, as well as we know, human health and just communities. But once again, the Southborough Planning Board is leading the charge here. I'm a member of Metro West Conservation Alliance, 36 towns and communities. And they have a dark sky initiative they're looking into. And at a recent meeting, we were able to say, well, Southborough's already working on their bylaw. So thank you for being so proactive on these issues. One thing that did get mentioned, and I admit I haven't read the most recent draft of this, that some areas are using a different standard after a certain hour. So that if you're in L-2 after, when, or L-3 when the businesses are closed, that it becomes a lower lighting level. I don't know if you've looked into that or not, but it's just a way that other people are looking at that. Makes sense. If they're not in vis, they don't need to be brightly lit.
Yep. In the current draft that Destin created, there is a mention that after a certain hour that that lighting will drop to whatever level is significant for safety. That the only place where the lighting would remain 24 hours at that level would be businesses that were open or operating on a 24-hour basis.
And then one other comment building on what Mimi had said about the Route 9 being the highlight. I'm not sure about industrial districts because we have some, throughout town, there's small areas. Southville Road, industrial zone right across the street from residential. You know, how is that treated, different than, say, an industrial park up off of Route 9? I'm not sure. Does industrial parks are a different zone than industrial? But is there a consideration for when your neighbors are residential?
Yeah, I think we can talk about that more on Thursday. I think, you know, in terms of implementation via the zoning, the current zoning, it will probably be easier than doing an overlay and trying to parse that out. But we can definitely discuss that more.
Okay.
Anything else on the lighting bylaw?
Thank you, Sarah and Marnie. This is very, very exciting bylaw. Great work you're doing.
Thank you.
When was I in? Today's Monday. Was it Friday?
Friday.
Sarah and I went over that lighting. And it's my prediction, she's doing excellent work. She's only been here a short time, that at some point in the near future, Sarah will be at the state level as the state expert on this initiative. And- Working for the governor. Remember that, Sarah.
That's right, I will.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion item. Site plan review bylaw.
I think that's me again.
Sarah.
So, you know, looking again at the, at the site plan bylaw, you know, we recognize that there is room for improvement and update of the- we recognize that there is room for improvement and update, um, of the minor and the major kind of revision as a whole. We're thinking at this point to kind of only present at town meeting, taking out the site plan review committee, and making that our major focus, rather than doing a deep dive into kind of the nitty-gritty requirements of each. Um, we are concerned that if we get into that, and it looks like too much of a revision, that we will not get the one thing that we really want, which is just to kind of alleviate that, um, that site plan review committee. Um, so, so the draft that was presented is pretty much how it's gonna be, um, at this point, since we're not gonna, you know, go into some of those more nitty-gritty details.
Can I also just add, and, uh, Sarah, I'm not sure, I think I forwarded to you, but there's so much going on lately, um, that, um, town council also, um, provided a legal opinion.
Yes.
And if you're...
And it's in the packet.
It is in the packet.
Yes, it is.
So, if you have any questions on that, um, the recommendation was that it would c- make a big clarifica- it would be a good clarification in the bylaw to have minor site plan under planning board review as well.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Sarah, great work.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is a discussion item, ZBA zoning bylaw update, non-conforming uses and structures. Special permit requirements, exemptions, and extensions or alterations. These are sections within the zoning bylaw. Who's gonna speak to this one?
This is Sarah's.
This is me again? Bylaws are kind of my thing. Um, so, yeah, I, uh, had it, uh, Katie reached out to me, uh, from the ZBA, asking about, um, how to update, uh, these three sections, uh, given recent kind of litigation about a non-conforming law and a one-to-one replacement. It was interpreted at first, uh, by the building department that they would need to go to the ZBA and get a variance in order to do that one-to-one replacement, although the state law, um, actually allows that as of right. And so, there was some ambiguity in these sections as to what was allowed as of right and what needed that variance. So, it's a, actually a very minor change that makes a big impact. Um, so, what they've added, um, you know, to one seventy-four dash nine, uh, is alterations, reconstruction, or otherwise structural changes, which kind of covers everything, 'cause currently all it says is extension or alteration. So, they're adding just those additional kind of verbiage to, to show that, like, anything that you're gonna be doing, you know, will need a special permit. Um, if it doesn't fall within the subsequent, um, as-of-right designation, which comes under one seventy-four dash nineteen, um, for the single-family home structure, so one seventy-four dash nineteen B. Um, and so, we updated A to, to show that, that, um, that same change, adding reconstruction, structural changes, and then highlighted in B what was permitted as of right.
So, generally, it's clarification, it's not really changing the intent, it's just making it crystal clear to people who come before a building commissioner.
Yep.
With, um, a change to a non-conforming.
And the ZBA, um, actually received guidance from Aldo, uh, and he had indicated that it would be a, a good idea to move forward in making sure that was, you know, very clear, because the intent was there for the most part, um, but, but wasn't as clear as it could be, especially given newer kind of case law. Um, the other thing that came up in this process, um, was who, uh, in terms of town departments can bring a zoning amendment forward. Um, and we reached out to Aldo for some guidance on that, um, and he gave some clarity that the ZBA can present it as their warrant article, that it didn't have to come from the planning board. Um, and we're going to be, it has to come through the planning board for that public hearing, but it doesn't have to be, you know, our warrant article. Um, so he made that clarification and suggested that perhaps it would be important for the department heads to kind of get together with him after the first of the year to make sure that everyone was on the same page about, um, you know, who could bring those amendment for- amendments forward, and kind of the process, you know, in terms of it coming through the planning board for that public hearing.
And the DHCD has a, um, a guidance document on that, and I think Mimi, you had forwarded it to me a couple of years ago.
Oh, did I?
I think you did, and so I passed it on to Sarah, and, um, just to recap, that all these zoning bylaw amendments, um, are required to come before the planning board for public hearings, for the public to vet, uh, or for the public to give their input onto them. So, um, these three, um, f- for sure, right now.
Yeah.
Will be public hearings that were, Sarah has created a schedule to time it, so we have enough time to have a planning board meeting, plus one backup meeting in case it gets continued, 'cause the time's very tight.
Hmm.
And then, um, the EDC is working on their potential, um, warrant article as well, which would have to come before us, too, if they, uh, meet the timeframes. And that's what we have.
Yeah, and I, usually when we get into these type of discussions, I, I try to, um, remember that, um, at times, uh, the planning board will hold a public hearing for a zoning, uh, potential zoning bylaw, uh, and oppose, even though we, we hold the hearing, it's possible for the planning board to be in opposition to the particulars of the, uh, proposed bylaw. That's not the case in this, for these, at least not at this time, the board hasn't reviewed them. But we do hold a public hearings whether we, uh, go along with the changes or not. Mrs. Julian.
Just a point of clarity on that, so if we hold the meetings, and then it goes to town meeting vote, and the vote approves the meeting, but we've opposed it, how does that work? Is it, we're overridden by the town's decision in the town meeting? Okay.
Yeah, we're just one board, um, some people, uh, are interested in our opinion relative to zoning articles, so, most of the time, uh, we're, we're, they're presented by us, or sponsored by us, sometimes by the ZBA, sometimes by the selectmen, so, and then we just render an opinion, sometimes it's unanimous in favor, sometimes unanimous opposed, or mixed. That's just the way it goes.
And just one more point of clarity, so, um, are there specific, so I know you had just made the comment that who would be the one to bring it forward in the town meeting? So, can anybody bring it? I just heard you mention the EDC, I know there was a placeholder in the warrant, the EDC is bringing that forward, or does the selectmen bring that forward? Can anybody bring forward a zoning change?
No, Sarah can answer that.
Okay, thanks.
Um, no, it is relatively limited, um, the ZBA, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, citizens petition, I think there may be one more.
Yeah, we can forward that document if you wanna see it.
But I can forward that, too, yeah.
But the key is that, except for the EDC, if you look at the draft warrant article right now, it's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So, for example.
Nothing more on that discussion item, we'll move on, uh, other business properly before the board, the planners' report. Karina.
Here, um... Do you wanna discuss this during the meeting minutes, like, not the content, but... Okay, planners' report, I'm sorry, I just needed clarification. Um, I'll be going on vacation this Wednesday, coming back on the thirtieth of December, but then I'll be out for the new year until the second. And Sarah, my assistant's going to be in charge, holding the fort, I'm a hundred percent, two-hundred percent confident that, um, she will do a great job, and she'll be able to answer questions, and we'll have everything set up so that, um, she doesn't miss any of the information that comes in through email or phone calls and such. I just wanted to point out that, um, I had a lot of vacation time on the books this year because of the vacancies and the turnaround, um, and, um, upon discussing the budget with, um, Dawn, who's been charged usually with looking at details of the budget with me on minor things, um, and also, uh, following up with my Purple Town Administrator, um, for the reasons why the town, um, well, let me put it this way, I'll be getting, um, a couple of weeks vacation paid in lieu of taking it, um, 'cause January first is the deadline, 'cause my start date was January twenty-third, and it always reverts back to the first. So, um, they've been, um, I'm very grateful that, um, the decision came to that, 'cause it helps me also, um, mediate that this problem doesn't keep occurring next year, 'cause now that Sarah's here, I'm able to, um, you know, take some time off on a nor- more normal basis. So, I'm looking forward to that. And also, this will help me, um, take some of the time off the books so that I don't run into the same problem next year. Dawn, did you have anything you wanted to add on that?
Yeah, it's very important to take, that's why you, you get the vacation time, because it's, helps, uh, with morale, it helps with, uh, your, um, being a, you know, well-rounded person, to have rest and vacation from work. And, um, a great, uh, compliment to you, Karina, for, um, you know, working so long and so hard, uh, uh, during two thousand nineteen, when, um, once again, we had, uh, you were a one-person department. So, hopefully next year, um, it'll be the way it's intended to be, everybody gets to take their vacation, and, um, the, uh, planning department continues to, um, operate.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you again, so, um, uh, regarding the EDC, if you're not aware, I think Julie Connolly has stepped down as the chairperson, and they have a new chair, um, Mr. Tom Collins, uh, who'd be an asset to that group. Let's see here, the Public Works Planning Board, um, I believe there's a warrant article regarding, um, them, um, perhaps having a consultant on board, um, to help support their efforts on public works projects, um, that they review or consider such, whether it's sidewalks and things like that. Ken's Food, Food Sign, Andrew's not here to hear this good news, but it is back, um, in operation. Jim Bourne from Ken's Food emailed me last week, said, um, everything's all set, it's back working, so you'll see white at night and blue in the daytime on the Ken's Food Building sign. Park Central is still in conservation, being continued, so that's that. We have a letter from the Postal Service, uh, Builders Guide for Developers, they're asking for consideration for future, uh, subdivision design, um, that there is a mailbox used for all the mailboxes in the community, at, which you see, like, at the end of the streets, where you have a little mail station, where everybody ha- as opposed to going from door to door. I'll post this, if it's not yet up on the Dropbox, and, um, just to take a look at, to see how this might impact future conditions, um, or subdivision designs for new roadways. And then, did you wanna talk about the potential, um, for open space inspection, or you wanna hold that? Where we might have a program?
Let's hold that one.
Okay. Yeah, I was just asking about open space monitoring at this point, but we'll hold off on this, it's a little early in the year for that.
In the idea, idea stage.
Idea stage.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's all I have for the planners' report this evening. Oh, I just wanted to say, I think, um, Karen Gallagher has been doing a great job getting all the paving done before, um, the real winter season hits, um, I believe, not only here on Main Street, 'cause now it's, it's much easier to pass and leave the townhouse and come in, and also two sections, like, down on eighty-five, and there was another up on Acre Bridge Road, or somewhere north, um, where she also got the paving done. So, it, it helps me a lot, 'cause I commute along that way. So, thanks, Karen.
She paves your way?
Yes. She did.
So, next item is the approval of minutes, December second, two thousand nineteen. Mrs. Latrell.
I move that we approve the minutes for December second, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, um, I was not at that meeting, but are you saying that I could still vote for that?
It's my understanding that you, you can vote on the meeting minutes if you were not present at the meeting.
So, we'll give it a try. Any discussion? All in favor? Three to zero. Next item is, uh, approval of the executive session minutes, December second, two thousand nineteen. Once again, I was not at that session. Mrs. Latrell.
I move that we approve the executive session minutes for December second, twenty nineteen.
There was a, just, can I just say something in between? Um, there was a request from, um, there was a question asked from, um, Jesse Stein as to if town council should review the executive session before they're approved. So, I, um, posed that question to town council, and he said that one member cannot, um, request that, that it would have to be a consensus of the planning board to ask Aldo to review. So, I don't, from Jesse's question, I didn't know if it was a definitive, "I want it, how do we do it," or, "Does it need to be?"
So, so, the motion was made, it was not seconded, uh, so if the motion is withdrawn, then maybe we'll just indicate our, um, feelings about having town council review the minutes, and then at our next meeting, based on his review, we would be guided as to whether or not to approve the minutes.
Or you could also, just to interject, postpone this until the next meeting, where, Jesse Stein would be president and could clarify his intent of his question. In other words, they don't have to be approved tonight, they, we could approve them, and then if they still had to go to town council, it's still only two weeks away. So, I just wanted to, m- m- let you know, that was an option, too.
I withdraw my motion.
Is it the board's desire to have Aldo look at the minutes ASAP, or put this whole matter off until Jesse is at, at our next meeting? The, uh, the tri- not the trial date, but the, the court action, the next court action is, is, uh, Wednesday, day after tomorrow. Do you know if that's still on?
I believe it is, D- December eighteenth.
Now, was that like a scheduling conference, or... That they're just, they lay out the timeline?
Yes.
Okay.
Maybe we should just, uh, let that be the next item, that's, the next thing that happens relative to this, and we'll, um, I would recommend we just hold off on any action relative to these mi- executive session meeting minutes. It was agreed. Okay, our next meeting is January sixth. Anything else from the public? Tim?
Tim Woodland-Road, if you have a couple of minutes, um, I thought I'd give you a heads-up about one of the other warrant articles that may intersect with some of your responsibilities. The town has a somewhat obscure committee called the Americans with Disabilities Act Committee, which has been inactive until... Committee, which has been inactive until recently, it's now looking to reorganize, and I've been trying to help them with that. The current ad hoc committee was formed in response to the federal law, the same name, back in 1990, that's when the law passed, and the charge is to identify community needs under that law. Since then, there are at least 10 other laws, statutes, policies, and regulations that require or encourage access to town facilities, programs, and services. The other thing is that public awareness of access for people with disabilities has gone up, and demographics have changed, so it becomes more important, particularly on the senior end of the spectrum. So it's a long-term issue, and an ad hoc committee that's been around for a couple of decades doesn't make sense. So that committee has voted to request a warrant article that would turn it into a standing committee, change its name, and change the charge to incorporate, you know, all the things in, in this area. The new name would be the Accessibility Compliance Committee, as it's currently drafted. It's not an enforcement agency, it just provides a focal point for tracking concerns, voiding issues, and public outreach. And it would be, the main, the other purpose here is to make sure that we don't get into the situation we are in, and have been, where we end up having to retrofit, because, you know, retrofitting is always more expensive and more painful than getting things right the first time. So that's going on, there is a brief slide set, there is a draft article including the bylaw, I don't want to go into that tonight, but I just sort of wanted to give you the heads up, since you're reviewing plans, and those sometimes involve accessibility issues. I just don't like things to be surprises.
Tim, is that one committee's replacing the other?
Yeah, basically, the current committee is restricted to just the Americans with Disabilities Act, and it's an ad hoc committee that's been around for a couple of decades, is best I can tell. So the idea is that it gets renamed and converted into a bylaw committee, so that it has reason to stick around, and it has the scope required to solve the problems.
All right, yeah, thanks.
Sure.
Tim, before you run away, I have a question. So who, who does this, this is an advisory committee?
It's not, well, it is, it is, it has a couple of functions, one is monitoring compliance, so all the issues that come in when people raise complaints today under ADA, they go to the ADA Coordinator, and that's to, to the ADA Committee. So this would expand that to all, the various laws and regulations that, that apply, not just ADA. It's important, I think, to be able to see trends town-wide, you know, whether or not, you know, some things may happen in the schools, or may happen, you know, that aren't strictly in the town bailiwick, but still it's important to have a look. It does review town projects and programs, both the existing ones and the proposed ones, for issues, the existing ones, so we fix them before they escalate into, you know, conflagrations, and the proposed ones, to try and design around issues and avoid having them become an issue in the, in the first place. But it doesn't, it's not an enforcement agent, it's just trying to understand what's happening, prevent things from happening going forward, and also to advocate, somewhat in the, in the way that you do, for a consistent approach across the town, not just in town projects, but in developments, you know. I'm sure it will advocate for sidewalks, as well as, as, you know, building entrances that are accessible, and, you know, websites that are accessible, and all those other things.
So would they review site plans in?
Their review, their review is limited to town projects, programs, facilities-
Oh, so just-
For the town stuff, it's-
Oh, okay.
Because it's, it's, it's a ridiculously large problem to look at what's going on in the private space, and the town really can't do anything about that, it's the responsibility of a developer, an architect, and engineer to make sure that things comply. But when complaints come in, it's worth looking at townwide to see, you know, are things being reviewed right in the first place?
Okay.
So in that, so I guess, in that sense, it's, it's advisory, but it's not, it's not like the advisory committee, it doesn't have those sorts of powers.
Thank you.
Sure, and if you want more information, either the committee members can come in, or I can come in and take more of your time.
Anything else from the board? Before we do the motion to adjourn, I just wanted to note that an old friend, Rob Titus, recently passed away, he spent countless hours volunteering his time to different things throughout the town and the community. He also appeared before this board several decades ago as a developer, and I just wanted to note his passing and that he will be missed. I also wanted to say that if you're watching this video, you're not seeing things, this, this is the first time that I think the planning board has only had one male attendee. I remember several years ago, when I was on the board, the town planner was a man, and all five planning board members were men. And so here tonight, I sit at this table, surrounded by females, and say it with great pride and, and fun, that we've come a long way, and hope to see you again. Is there anything else from the public? Actually have someone from the, people from the public tonight, this is great, but it's still early. Mrs. Luttrell?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, we're adjourned.